Good evening, everybody. This is the July 7, 2015 meeting of the Revere School Committee. Will all please rise and salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Malone, roll call, please.
Mr. Ferenti.
Here.
Ms. Gravellisi.
Here.
Mr. McGuire.
Here.
Ms. Pruitt.
Here.
Mrs. Rizzo.
Here.
Ms. Ty.
Here.
Mayor Rizzo.
Here. Approval of the minutes of the June 9, 2015 meeting.
So moved, Mr. Daken.
All in favor?
Aye.
So ordered.
Dr. Kelly, Superintendent's Report. And we may, yeah, exactly, Dr. Kelly can do a welcome.
My very first. It's very easy to make me turn red. It's my fair Irish skin. So I'm very pleased tonight to start off my first school committee meeting with the welcoming of two new members of our administrative team and two new principals for the Garfield Elementary School and the Garfield Middle. Both of them share Revere Public Schools. They have emphasis on rigor, relevance, relationships, and resilience, just as we do in all of our work. And the interview committees in both cases spent two full days interviewing and deliberating and talking to references about the different candidates for both of these jobs. And I need you to know that in both cases, the two candidates who we were able to get to agree and commit with us and contract with us were by far and away unanimously the number-one choices in both situations. And, you know, I have to point out how unusual that is because when we have parents and teachers and other administrators on an interview panel, they typically have different priorities and are looking for different strengths in candidates and don't always agree on who would be the best match for what we need in the Revere Public Schools. So it speaks volumes about how well Mr. Coots and Dr. Meyer were able to articulate their ideas about curriculum, instruction, relationships, how to manage student discipline, how to collaborate with parents in the community, and how to work with other adults in the school building. So I'm going to invite them each up to speak, but before I do, I want to, we'll start with Mr. Corbett Coots, who is the next principal of the Garfield Elementary School. And just by way of introduction, Mr. Coots comes to us from Boston Public Schools with nine years of urban school administrative experience, five of them as a principal. Prior to moving into administration, he taught special education in a substantially separate classroom. And he earned his bachelor's degree at Norwich University, his master's degree at Northeastern University, and is well-known in the urban school district center for using data cycles to differentiate instruction and maximize student achievement. So congratulations, Corbett. We welcome you aboard, and I invite you up to say a few words.
This is an honor and a privilege to be joining the city of Revere and the Revere Public Schools. What most interests me about coming to Revere was the reputation of Dr. Daken and Dr. Kelly in the Revere Public Schools as an innovative urban district that is on the move and getting great results for students. And so that was definitely something that excited me about coming to Revere. And again, I thank you all for the opportunity to come and lead in your city, and I look forward to having the opportunity to interact with all of you, but first and foremost with our young folks, our students and their families, and also the teachers and staff at the school. So what I'm hoping to bring to the Garfield Elementary School and the Revere Public Schools is an inclusive approach to leadership.
Daddy!
My fan club is right there. And what I mean by an inclusive approach, that means having processes and relationships with the people that are working every day with our students and also the families that are at home raising our young people. We know that parents are children's first teacher. And so I am, I take an inclusive approach. I'm a collaborator, and I'm excited to work with the teachers and teacher teams at the school to build on the great success that is already happening there. So one of my focus areas is first and foremost to learn about the amazing things that are happening at the Garfield and the amazing things that are happening in Revere Public Schools, and to build upon the success that the Garfield Elementary School has experienced recently, moving from Level 3 to Level 2, with the ultimate goal of making the necessary improvements to reach Level 1 status. So that is the ultimate goal. And I'm also very interested in working with the staff to make sure that those teacher teams are effective and efficient and working focused on what's best for students every day. The other thing that was really exciting for me to join Revere Public Schools was I saw this as a district where I could really grow and learn. So some of the things I want to focus on this year with the help of Dr. Kelly and Danielle is to really focus on rigorous instruction in classrooms and making sure that everything that's happening is aligned to the new Common Core State Standards, and we're setting up our children for success on the park exam. And I'm also really interested in starting some conversations and really celebrating the diversity of the school community and figuring out how we can leverage that to get the best out of everyone who's working there and learning there. So thank you again. This is a really exciting opportunity. I'm thrilled again to be here and join this amazing team of educators at the school level and the district level, and I look forward to working with you all and celebrating the continued success of the Garfield Elementary. Thank you.
All right. So next, I'd like to introduce somebody who really does not need an introduction in these parts. Dr. Meyer has been with us for 15 years now in the Revere Public Schools, the last nine as an administrator. And most recently, she was at Revere High School as an assistant principal. And her background is actually in teaching physics. Before she came to us, she earned a bachelor's degree from Cornell University. And after that, she was a petty officer in the U.S. Coast Guard. So she's got a bit of military experience behind her as well. She started teaching in 2000, and since then, she's earned both a master's degree and a doctorate in urban school leadership from the University of Massachusetts at Boston. Her extensive work with student-centered learning and with the iPad Initiative at Revere High School is going to be critical to the work we're doing as we've rolled out one-to-one iPads in eighth grade at Garfield Middle School. Hopefully, she'll help us expand that program even further. And her recent dissertation work around positive student discipline approaches meshes well with the culture and philosophy of discipline at the Garfield. So welcome, Samantha. Congratulations. I shouldn't say welcome because you've been here for so long, but we invite you to say a couple words as well.
Good evening, Mr. Malone, Ms. Mukaba, Dr. Kelly, members of the school committee, and Mayor Rizzo. I'd like to take this opportunity to say thank you for the confidence that you've shown in me. I've spent, as Dr. Kelly said, my 15 years, my entire career in Revere as an educator, first as a teacher and then as a vice principal. And I'm excited to begin a new phase of that career as a principal of the Garfield Middle School. I'm committed to continuing to work as a piece of the team district-wide, teachers, administrators, parents, support staff, the team that's made Revere Public Schools so successful by supporting student-centered learning through the four hours that we all live and breathe, rigor, relevance, relationships, and resiliency. My speech is going to be shorter than Corbett's, but again, thank you. I look forward to working with all of you as we continue to make Revere the best urban district in the state.
Are there any members who'd like to make any comments? Ms. Ty.
Well, I really just want to say another welcome because I don't want it to just stay there, that we are all excited. I mean, I have known Samantha since I think I hired you. I mean, so I've known her for a long time, and I've heard wonderful things about you, Corbett. And it's just, I'm really happy to see new leadership and people who have the excitement that the two of you have. So thank you. I look forward to working with you for a while.
Any other members? Mr. McGuire?
As a parent of a daughter who attended the Garfield Middle School, you have an advocate in me to help spruce up the outside of that school, the both of you.
Thank you.
Any ideas? You can reach out to me. Our counselor, Novoselski, is a big fan. He's the ward counselor, and he actually does a great national night out. I think it's August 3, which is down right at the Garfield Park baseball field. It's a movie and stuff like that. It'd be a great way. Samantha, you know a lot of people in the city, but maybe Corbett and bring the kids. I'll be there. So if you have an advocate, though, to try to beautify that section and that school or city, good luck.
Thank you.
Any other members? Ms. Rizzo?
You not only have a friend in Mr. McGuire, but we would all be happy to visit you, help you in any way that you can. You're filling big shoes there between Patty and Danielle, but we look forward to new eyes, and you're working with great people there. And I know you already realize that, but we're proud to have you, and we really do look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Okay. So I'll just echo the sentiments of the people who spoke earlier to both you, Samantha and Corbett. You know, I have to say, as I have spent the last three and a half years, not only here in Revere, but at meetings really across the state, it is incredible to me how well-regarded that our school system is here in the city of Revere. Without question, and I say this quite a bit, it's one of my personal great sources of pride as I attend meetings outside the city in particular. I mean, we know what we have here in the city. The results speak for themselves, but it is great to know that the results are permeating outside the community and that people outside the community are recognizing what a tremendous school department that we have here. So I'm sure while I wasn't part of the selection committee, that great selections have been made and that the great work that our school department and our school system is doing throughout the system is just going to continue under your leadership. So congratulations. You have everybody's support here. The cleanup might be a tall order, but we can certainly look at that. And I want to wish you all the best, okay? And with that, we'll take a five-minute recess. So I see a lot of young people here that probably want to make their way out. So thank you again. Five-minute recess.
Ice cream sounds good.
Ice cream sounds good.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the next thing I wanted to do was just give a brief update on our end-of-year and summer work and summer programs that are going on throughout the city. Despite it being summer, a lot of people think that the schools shut down in the summer, but they certainly do not. So I just wanted to talk briefly about some big events, some big things that we have going on. We've got over, close to 20 summer programs going on to help our students, both if they need extra help and also if they need advanced work in what they're doing. We've got programs at each of our elementary schools. In addition, we have Moving Up programs for students rising from fifth grade into each of our three middle schools. We also have a program for eighth graders who are rising up to the high school and might need some support or some adults that they can connect with before school starts in the fall. So we are moving forward. We do still have full programs running. All of our buildings are open Mondays through Thursdays from at least 8:00 until 2:00. And we continue to provide programming that will help bridge the summer months for kids who need that kind of a bridge. In addition to that, our maintenance and custodial teams are doing unbelievable work getting these schools ready to reopen in the fall. They've already started the work of removing all furniture and other items from classrooms so that they can strip floors and re-wax them and really give the good kind of deep cleaning that helps us maintain our buildings at a level that will keep them viable for a number of years to come, which of course is something that we need. So I just wanted to give a shout-out to our maintenance and our custodial teams that are doing so much great work, in addition to some major projects that are going on with painting at West Riviera and bathrooms and paintings down at Beauchamp, a hot water system at the Remy Marsh Academy, a major painting project on floors 3 and 4 of the Garfield School, and some weatherproofing and caulking going on around the Beauchamp School. So all of this is going on in addition to the major work that they're doing inside of the buildings, getting all of the classrooms ready to receive their new students in the fall. And I just think that it's important that we recognize that work that they're doing. And the last thing that I wanted to mention in relation to the schools is actually a great citywide program that we have that makes lunch and breakfast available to any member of the community of Revere. And there are actually 20 sites. Nineteen of them offer both breakfast and lunch. And then the one site that's up near the Hill School, the new Hill School of the stadium, offers just lunch daily from 11:00 to 1:00. At all 20 sites, breakfast is from 8:00 to 9:00, and lunch is from 11:00 to 1:00. And those sites are at our eight schools as well as 12 other places around the city. And for more information on that program, you can look at the city's summer information packet that I know is available throughout the city. So that's the update on summer work and things that we have going on in our schools throughout the summer. And then the last thing that I wanted to talk about in the superintendent's report is the Revere Teachers Association memorandum of agreement that we reached with the union and that was voted on by their membership. We worked really hard with the union, and you know, as always, negotiations don't always go very smoothly. There are always bumps in the road. And we met our bumps in the road with the union, but fortunately, we were able to work through them and come to this agreement. So we're really happy that we've developed a program that honors the teachers and the great work that they do and is something that is still feasible and viable for the school district and doesn't put us in a position that we're not able to meet contract requirements. So I would ask that the school committee move forward with the process of verifying that memorandum so that we can get that signed and move forward with the agreement.
I move that we ratify, vote to ratify, the CBA, the Collective Bargaining Agreement, under the memorandum of understanding with the Revere Teachers Association.
Second.
I do have something I'd like to say about it.
Yes, Ms. Ty.
Well, I know that I've done negotiations in a lot of different ways, and they never run smoothly. But this one was very productive. But what I especially like about the, in this particular memorandum of understanding, is the provision to continue talking, particularly about the extracurricular activities, because we've had a real, I won't say problem with it, but we've had some misunderstandings about that. And that gives the teachers a sense of fairness, that they know that they have been treated equally and rewarded in as much financial way that we can possibly do. But it's especially good that we are going to continue to talk about it. So I congratulate the administration, Dr. Dakin, Dr. Kelly, for having made that a part of it in addition to the others. And I think the money is fair, and I appreciate the fact that we will have more time in the classroom for the children. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ty. And so we have a motion, a second, and Mr. Malone, if you'd like to call the roll, please. Mr. Ferenti?
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. McGuire?
Yes.
Ms. Pruitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo?
Yes.
Ms. Ty?
Yes.
Mayor Rizzo?
Yes.
The contract, the collective bargain agreement, is ratified.
Great. So just two more quick things that I wanted to do here. One is a clarification on the summer food program that I spoke about a minute ago. I just want to clarify that that's for kids, or individuals who are 18 years or younger. And that's the breakfast and lunch program that I spoke about at the schools in 12 other locations across the city. And then one other thing I wanted to mention is that we had on the agenda a discussion by Dr. Garcia about a trip for high school students to Washington, D.C., and that is actually tabled until the September meeting. So I just want to mention that in case people are looking at the agenda and wondering why we didn't talk about that. And that concludes the superintendent's report.
Well, Dr. Kelly, I think you did a tremendous job in your first two superintendent's reports. So congratulations. Very informative. And I think before we move on to the staff sergeant, James J. Hill School, you know, obviously, we have Assistant Superintendent Chris Malone with us, but I think I should also recognize, I think for her first time sitting here, Assistant Superintendent Danielle McCobbe. So welcome to the school committee. This is where all the business gets done. Although the teachers would say it gets done in the classroom, but we... So we will move on to approval of the bills for the Hill School as recommended by the building, school building subcommittee. I'd like to now call on Ms. Gravellisi.
There we go. Incumbrances. FFNE Change Order Number 1, Creative Office Pavilion, $882. Change in fabric selection on armchairs to be added to the existing purchase order number 01. So moved.
Second.
All in favor? So ordered.
Okay. Equipment contracts. Harbor food service equipment, $32,352.81 for kitchen smallwares. So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please. Mr. Ferenti?
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. McGuire?
Yes.
Ms. Pruitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo?
Here.
Ms. Ty?
Yes.
Mayor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Next is Rico USA Inc., $38,635.69 for copy machines. So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please. Mr. Ferenti?
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. McGuire?
Yes.
Ms. Pruitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo?
Yes.
Ms. Ty?
Yes.
Mayor Rizzo?
Yes.
Technology contracts. Wally Computer Associates, $2,279 for additional light switches to be added to existing purchase order number 51. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So ordered.
Move from McKinley School to the Hill School. William Low &amp; Sons Movers Corp., $12,899. Move from old school to new school. So moved.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. Ferenti?
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. McGuire?
Yes.
Ms. Pruitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo?
Yes.
Ms. Ty?
Yes.
Mayor Rizzo?
Yes.
Invoices. DRA Basic Services, $37,513. Invoice number 35 for June services. So moved.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. Ferenti?
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. McGuire?
Yes.
Ms. Pruitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo?
Yes.
Ms. Ty?
Yes.
Mayor Rizzo?
Yes.
DRA PSS number 3, $7,051.64. Invoice number 06 for May 2014 to June 2014, geotech work for foundation system. So moved.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. Ferenti?
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. McGuire?
Yes.
Ms. Pruitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo?
Yes.
Ms. Ty?
Yes.
Mayor Rizzo?
Yes.
DRA PSS number 9, $8,108.59. Invoice number 02, May 2014 to June 2014, additional geotech. So moved.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. Ferenti?
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. McGuire?
Yes.
Ms. Pruitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo?
Yes.
Ms. Ty?
Yes.
Mayor Rizzo?
Yes.
DRA PSS number 12, $10,860.43. Invoice number 2 for May 2014 to July 2014, additional geotech. So moved.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. Ferenti?
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. McGuire?
Yes.
Ms. Pruitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo?
Yes.
Ms. Ty?
Yes.
Mayor Rizzo?
Yes.
DRA PSS number 16, $22,550. Invoice number 16.1 for additional geotech. So moved.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. Ferenti?
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. McGuire?
Yes.
Ms. Pruitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo?
Yes.
Ms. Ty?
Yes.
Mayor Rizzo?
Yes.
DRA PSS number 16, $7,697.31. Invoice number 16.2, additional geotech from April 2015. So moved.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. Ferenti?
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. McGuire?
Yes.
Ms. Pruitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo?
Yes.
Ms. Ty?
Yes.
Mayor Rizzo?
Yes.
CTA Construction Base, $1,259,149.15. Requisition number 17 for June services. So moved.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. Ferenti?
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. McGuire?
Yes.
Ms. Pruitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo?
Yes.
Ms. Ty?
Yes.
Mayor Rizzo?
Yes.
CTA Construction Change Order Number 1, $102,812.80. Requisition number 17 for June services. So moved.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. Ferenti?
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. McGuire?
Yes.
Ms. Pruitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo?
Yes.
Ms. Ty?
Yes.
Mayor Rizzo?
Yes.
CTA Construction Change Order Number 10, $2,625.12. Requisition number 17 for June services. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So ordered.
CTA Construction Change Order Number 11, $41,343.66. Requisition number 17 for June services. So moved.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. Ferenti?
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. McGuire?
Yes.
Ms. Pruitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo?
Yes.
Ms. Ty?
Yes.
Mayor Rizzo?
Yes.
And do we want the total?
Yes.
Okay. Total, the total for requisition number 17 is $1,405,930.73. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gravellisi, for that report. Calendar item number 5, I believe we have two subcommittee reports. One is a policy subcommittee, and the other one involves an online handbook. Ms. Rizzo?
It really is just one pressed together. Two months ago, this honorable body adopted a new policy handbook and worked very hard on it. We met, the Subcommittee for Policy met Thursday, July 2nd, and what we are doing right now is recommending that the policy handbook be placed online so that it would be accessible to parents, students, faculty, and just bringing us into the 21st century and upgrading our technology even more, better than what we were before. So at this time, I am asking for a motion to be able to put the handbook online.
You make the motion.
I make a motion that we... Thank you. I make a motion that we put the handbook online for everyone to be able to access, and so moved.
Second.
Roll call, please. Mr. Ferenti?
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. McGuire?
Yes.
Ms. Pruitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo?
Yes.
Ms. Ty?
Yes.
Mayor Rizzo?
Yes.
Thank you very much for that subcommittee report. Calendar item number 6, School Department Communications. Hearing and seeing none. We'll move on to calendar item number 7, New Business. Hearing and seeing none. Calendar number 8, Late Communications. Are there any late communications?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi?
Thank you, Mayor Rizzo. There's one late communication from Jonathan Farrar, dated July 2nd.[1679.21]